Okay, I was just gonna ask you to wait for anyone. Uh, so let it call the meeting to order at six o'clock. And we will start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic.
Republic.
And. On the.
Under God.
Indemnity.
Liberty. Justice. For all. We're getting better guys, we're getting better.
I don't know. Only one way to go, it's up.
It's getting easier.
Oh, but you're right.
Uh, do we have any adjustments? I don't see any on the agenda.
Yeah, uh, we actually do, uh, we're gonna have to, um, uh, take off J three, the, um, new business item for a Sanford Custodial Unit to ratify the contract. Uh, we were, when we sent the agenda out last Wednesday, we were optimistic. Uh, we did have a good session, we are making progress, but we're not ready yet. Um, so that one is not ready to take action on today.
Okay, um, do we need like an official motion to remove that from the agenda? Probably right, huh?
Yes.
Okay, then I will make the motion to table, uh, item J three. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, I'll take the, uh, the vote roll. Uh, Kendra, how do you vote?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote affirmative as well. Okay, so that adjustment is made. Uh, anything else, Matt, or is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, approval minutes, we have none. Uh, public comments, um, I don't see any public on. Uh, we did all receive an email from a Sheila McGuckin, uh, essentially stating that she thought elementary, uh, schools should be remote as well, and that we should be, uh, more cautious, and I guess she's been advocating for the full remote since the beginning. Um, that was a pretty good synopsis, right, Matt?
Yeah, I did not receive that, I don't think.
Maybe not.
Yeah. I thought she said it to everybody, but maybe not. I'll forward it out to you, I'll copy you in that, and anybody else that didn't see it. I'll do that right now while we're chatting, but, um, other than that, have we gotten any other, uh, communications via the emails or anything, Matt?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, then communications, I see none. And that brings us to committee reports. So, construction update, uh, floor's yours, Matt.
Sure, so, uh, I gave an update last week, so we've had a few things changed, but, um, also, um, uh, just a few things, uh, as far as the high school, um, technical center, we've not had a lot of significant changes since I reported last Monday. The current punch list has eighteen items that remain open. Uh, there's seventeen items that are gonna be backchecked by the architect, they're scheduled to be here a week from tomorrow, um, at three PM, uh, for that. We also have, uh, twenty-five items that B A, B E A has to also verify, so we're hoping that they can also be there next, a week from next Tuesday. And there are, uh, a couple items that we are still, as the school department, verifying, um, for that. So the hope is after, um, reviewing the punch list a week from next Tuesday, um, we'll modify the recommended retainage. At right, at right now, we expect the retainage probably to be reduced to three hundred and forty thousand, uh, cause it's currently about seven hundred thousand, uh, with that, if the contractor does process a requisition, uh, before next Tuesday, uh, we can be able to try to revise that, um, before then. So as of right now, the retainage, uh, remains at seven hundred thousand with that. Uh, the contractor did present another balancing report. Um, the HVAC systems report, uh, states that if the air is flowing correctly to each space per design, and so right now, the engineers and commissioning agent are reviewing that, uh, for conformance with the original design. And, uh, the last report we had before that did include several issues that still need to be addressed. So, uh, that's where we stand for the high school.
Any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the, uh, elementary.
Okay, I'll start with Margaret Chase Smith School, um. Now that our students are back, uh, with that, the, uh, presence onsite is very limited at this point for both, uh, the architect as well as the contractor, um, with that. Um, we are looking at right now, a lot of the, uh, trainings, setting up some of the final trainings that are necessary to meet the requirements of final completion. Uh, in terms of the punch list, uh, we still have, uh, probably, um, over a hundred and forty items on that. Thirty of those or so are commissioning items that are functioning, but we just need written confirmation from the mechanical contractor so we can close them out. Uh, we do have most of the ceiling tiles, um, that were damaged when we did have, um, the water, uh, recently, they have been taken care of for that. Uh, we also have items on that list that are for, uh, Shaw Brothers, and that's related to the grass, and if you remember, those are items that are not gonna be resolved this fall, but resolved next spring. Uh, with that, and we're also at a place where we're finishing up a lot of the, um, touch-up paint, um, with that. So things continue to move along there, I think we're in pretty good shape. Also, as teachers and staff have been back in the building, there are a few miscellaneous things that we are identifying, and we are adding those to the punch list to make sure the contractor can look at them. That's it for MCS.
Okay, any questions for MCS? Okay, seeing none, let's, uh, move on to the middle school.
Okay, for converted middle school, uh, with that, um, where, uh, the architect is awaiting certified completed punch lists so that we can do the final walkthrough. Uh, we're also hoping to, uh, schedule that with, um, the fire marshal and code enforcement officer. We're looking to do that mid, uh, mid-week or by the end of the week, um, for that. Uh, we're in really good shape, I was up there onsite, uh, today. Um, pretty much all the spaces now are ready, uh, to be occupied. Uh, the one exception would be, uh, the horticulture room, which we knew about, and that's okay for being a little bit delayed. Um, in the meantime, um, we're hoping to, after that walkthrough mid-week or end-week, to get the final certificate of occupancy, because right now, our students at, uh, the middle school are learning remotely as construction is finished, with a goal of returning to in-person instruction, beginning a week from today, next Monday. Uh, we have had a couple of pipe leaks, um, as we, uh, investigate further, those are some of the older pipe joints, uh, that are being addressed, uh, with that, and luckily, uh, we caught those early, uh, and really was just one ceiling tile that was stained and needed to be replaced. In terms of, um, the converted elementary school, uh, we have a meeting this week with the architect and the Department of Education, uh, that we can have kind of a pre-meeting before we have our pre-construction meeting with the architect, uh, to kind of evaluate, uh, how this project's gone, some lessons learned that we wanna be able to take away from that, uh, to set us up for success in this project. Uh, that, uh, pre-construction meeting is gonna be, uh, a week from this Thursday, uh, for that. Um, right now, um, we are looking at reaching out to Unitil to coordinate the natural gas connection. We have received a schedule from Structure Tone, uh, for the converted elementary school project, we're reviewing that for accuracy. The schedule outlines the substantial completion date as of June first, and that was what we had agreed on, uh, at mediation, and construction is scheduled to begin October first. Uh, right now, we're also in the process of moving out all the equipment and furniture. Uh, we do have, uh, some of the, um, athletic, um, equipment to be moved out, we're planning to do that this Wednesday. And, uh, we also will be doing a, uh, three D, three D photo shoot of the elementary school after we move out and before construction starts, so we can have an accurate picture of the building before handing it over to the contractor. Uh, we did finish putting up the, um, marker boards. Uh, right now, we did have to have environmental advantage with that when we were, uh, drilling into the existing mastic, uh, just so that we were taking the proper, uh, protocols for any potential, uh, hot, uh, mastic that was there, and so, uh, in doing that, we did have staff work remotely, uh, last, uh, Friday and today, as that was getting finished up. Uh, for that, we are, um, I did send out an invite to our core building committee, uh, for a, uh, meeting and a tour, we're looking to tour both Margaret Chase Smith School and Sanford, um, Middle School. That'll be next Tuesday, September twenty-ninth, in the late afternoon. I've also invited the school committee to go back on the tours so we can get a look at Margaret Chase Smith School and, um, Sanford Middle School. I just wanna commend, uh, the staff and, uh, the custodians and the administration at both schools, um, for all the work that they've done. This hasn't been easy as you're coming in and transitioning, uh, setting up a new school year, uh, but I've been very impressed and very pleased with our teams and their plans to be able to work, to be able to get that done, uh, with that. So I'm, I'm excited to show these off, uh, the middle school to our students, uh, coming back next Monday, and to the core building committee and the school committee on their tours next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. Any questions on the converted middle school?
Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll move on, uh, performing arts committee, Emily.
Sure, we, uh, had a meeting last week. Uh, we got to meet our new student rep, who is, uh, Lindsay Brown. That, uh, was, uh, really, uh, awesome to see another student join us and, uh, very welcomed. Uh, we continue our, uh, really tough discussion about finances. Um, as I keep saying, uh, every time I give an update, the arts are taking a huge hit. Uh, it is gonna probably be the, the last thing to, to open. Um, so we continue those conversations. Um, we did talk about a little bit, um, of a Christmas offering, um, at a very limited capacity, but thinking it might, um, we might all need some Christmas cheer. Um, also, um, as we know, we're, uh, not able to run any clubs or activities, uh, but when we do get that started, Brett is looking to get the theater club together, uh, maybe do some one-act plays, uh, just keep them, uh, going. And, uh, we did discuss, um, our current box office software, uh, company is going out of business, they have sold. Um, and so, uh, we talked about, uh, those options, and if we convert over to the new software or get someone different, so, uh, we made some decisions about that, and that's all I have at this point.
Excellent, thanks Emily. Uh, Kendra, WSSR.
Yes, we had a meeting last Wednesday, uh, or was it Tuesday? Yeah, I think it was Wednesday. Um, and I'll just give you a little summary of the things we're working on, but I know Sarah is with us tonight, and I think James might be on, I'm not sure. Um, but one of the primary things we're working on is mailings. Um, James has really helped a lot in designing a postcard. Um, the, for the back is mostly WSSR with the new logo, um, and the front is gonna be really COVID-related. And we just recognize that, you know, having WSSR at this time, this year, has been such a godsend, and, um, thank goodness we have Sarah, and, and James backing it up too with the, um, with the program at the school. Um, so, our goal is to get these mailings out to every home in Sanford-Springdale. Um, it's expensive, um, but COVID relief money, it looks like they can, is going to be able to pay for that, and the whole point would be so everyone in the community knows how they can access programming, and also information that's coming out, especially since we really don't have any local newspapers anymore. Um, so, we had wanted to get those out by the middle of October, we decided we're gonna wait, um, probably until the first week in November, so they don't just get tossed in with all the election things that are coming through, um, at that point. Um, Sarah has, uh, finalized a fee schedule, and, um, she was going to contact Liz about trying to get that on our, uh, October fifth, um, agenda, for, for you folks to look at and to approve, on the school committee, we'd have to approve that, uh, fee schedule. Um, and then she's been working like crazy and doing a phenomenal job on, uh, public service announcements. Uh, they've done a lot with the videos and the, um, you know, even those videos, they've worked with Kneely, uh, a marketing company, and did all those videos you saw that, uh, show the inside of schools and the staff. Um, and also, um, James has talked about, and if he's on here, he could probably explain it, but I can't, but they're getting a lot of new subscribers to YouTube, um, which makes us on the cusp of being monetized. Um, so you get a little, James will have to explain that to you, get a little bit of money for every view. Um, Sarah is, um, planning to work with Ri, uh, Rick Stanley at the Chamber, and James would help too, to see if there's, uh, some kind of template to, um, take the radio show he does and put it into, um, a video. And James thinks possibly if there is that template, he could even have a student working on it. Um, Sarah's working and trying to get quotes for cameras in the stadium. Uh, the first quote she got was quite high, so, um, she's looking at trying to figure out if there are some sponsorships that might help with that. And, um, she's also gonna look further into the possibilities of streaming some of the games that the students have that have, were limited and who can go in, so that at least parents are able to see their, their, uh, students play. Um, but right now, I would like Sarah put together two, um, she's also doing some videos that are really starting to, um, create some revenue for WSSR. So I am going to stop talking and let Sarah tell you what's going on, and I just wanna say Sarah has been just cooking, oh yeah, she's doing a phenomenal job.
Well, thank you. Um, James just messaged me, he's not on, his kids go to bed at this hour, so, um, I can fill in a little bit. Um, basically, we're at nine hundred and thirty-three YouTube subscribers, and if we get to a thousand, we can monetize, it's really just pennies on the dollar, it's a little bit of bragging rights, but it's still, even with the wear mask PSA, uh, that's at almost six thousand views on YouTube, it's a hundred and fourteen thousand, maybe more on Facebook. We could, I mean, we could've made fifty bucks, but that's all right. It's pennies, uh, but it's, it's something. Uh, so yeah, the summer, basically, uh, little bit of recap for some revenue donations that we pulled in. Uh, we did film the Imagine Concert with, last, I don't even know what month it was, it was so long ago, but we got a thousand dollars for that. And in August, we did the Jazz Tap and Dance Academy over the weekend, we filmed for two days. We did a YouTube premiere, and so with that, and Blu-ray and DVD sales, pulled in seventeen hundred dollars. Um, I did some stuff with the Mouse and We Land Trusts this September, so they gave me two hundred and fifty dollars. And I've got two thousand dollars from DFC Strategies for Strangler Sanford for community art mural that they're painting at Gateway Park, I'm gonna do a little project with them on that. And also some social emotional learning videos, um, that they were able to, to put some money towards that. Um, there's also an additional forty-five hundred dollars coming from COVID funds for working with Kneely and airing those commercials. So that's pretty cool, just, uh, another way to utilize the peg channels. Um, yeah, what else? Just cranking them out.
That sounds like a lot to me already, Sarah, I don't know if you need to add anything else.
Okay, good, thank you.
No, I think, uh, Kendra already, uh, kinda started saying some stuff about it too, but WSSR's been pretty much invaluable, uh, during this time, and I think it just shows what it can be as far as a, a avenue of communication. So I think those mailings will be great, just to get it out there, so people are aware of it, cause there's still a number of people that really have no idea it even exists, um, so. Keep plugging along, I think we're going in the right direction, and if, uh, sports do kick up, hopefully we'll be able to turn on a dime and get that stuff streaming, so.
Hey, Don, Jonathan, I had a question for Kendra.
Yeah.
Kendra, um, obviously, I, I ain't even talking about budget season, but we've talked a lot, as has the city, about using SSR TV in lieu of lack of newspapers. Do you think your committee could put together a, you know, a loose, but a, 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 a budget for what really is needed to make, uh, SSR TV more robust? Is it two hundred thousand dollars? I mean, I, I, I think it's got a lot of zeros to it. But do you think some, a group could attempt to, uh, take a run at that?
I don't see why we couldn't put that right on the agenda and start talking about that, I mean, Matt's very involved in this committee too. Um, I think if nothing else, we're starting to see the value this has to our community, so, um, I, I think it's a good idea, Jonathan.
As well as bringing maybe a couple city councils into that, I don't know if any are on this committee or not, but I think it's gonna take a a good, cause it's gonna take a, but, city and school have to work together on this as far as finance goes.
Yeah, and that's what I didn't really mention a lot, I mean, to just remind, like Anne Hanselman is on this, um, Broadstock Pole, uh, and Ian Housel. Uh, I, so this has really become, and Mary Hastings. So this has really become, that's what I find very gratifying with this group, is it truly is a school-city collaboration, I think, um, with, with what's going on. I mean, much of what's been accomplished and what Sarah's been able to do, I think, um, is because of the collaboration that we've built this year. So it's been a great thing.
But, you know, there's, there's a couple, there's always, it's always nice to take a run at a budget, but
Yep.
You know, to, to throw twenty thousand at it when you need four hundred thousand, let's, let's try to be as real as we can about it.
We'll do that, I'll put that on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks Jonathan, any other, uh, questions, comments from anybody for WSSR? Okay, we'll keep plugging away, keep up the good work, Sarah, and James, passing along to him.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on.
Yeah, Don, so, I, I, yeah, as, as we, as we move on, I think, uh, as we look at, um, what, uh, both Kendra and Sarah, uh, referenced in terms of the video, uh, kind of a public service announcement that our students, they were the star of that video. A big thank you to Brett and Sarah, Brett Williamson, Sarah behind the scenes, uh, with that video, but I know for me, uh, that was really something that really touched me and really, uh, lifted my spirits, to be able to see our kids come back with that. I know, uh, the next morning, I sent that right off to our contacts at the main Department of Education, and that was something that they, uh, were able to, uh, with their contacts and their platform, push out, and as, uh, Sarah mentioned, we're up to over a hundred and fourteen thousand views on Facebook and another six thousand on YouTube. So, um, I just wanna say kudos, uh, to everyone involved in that. I know today, um, the Commissioner, Main Department of Education Commissioner, uh, Pender Makin, um, she was right now, um, on, uh, main public radio today, and as she was being interviewed, one of the questions they asked her is what can everyone do here to help us through? And Pender referenced the video that our kids did, in terms of absolutely the face coverings and keeping the six, uh, feet, so I thought that was pretty neat to be able to see how that, and the reach that that's had, so kudos to everyone involved in that.
Uh, definitely, it was an extremely well-done video.
I'd like to give an update on where we are on COVID nineteen, because since our last meeting, uh, there has been a lot going on. Um, last Friday, uh, we did have a, uh, confirmed case of an individual testing positive, uh, at Sanford High School and, um, uh, last Friday. And so, we did, um, I did reach out, follow our protocols as we work closely with the main Department of Education, and we work, uh, closely with, uh, the main CDC. Uh, we did have a meeting Friday afternoon with the main CDC. Uh, we reviewed a lot of information, uh, I found that to be very helpful as they put their team together, uh, at the CDC, uh, to kind of look at where we were in, uh, Sanford specifically. Uh, I did also have, uh, an emergency meeting last Friday afternoon with the sending, uh, school superintendents to SRTC. And so Friday, I made the decision, um, to have us transition at the high school and technical center from our yellow hybrid uh, grouping model to a, uh, red, uh, full-distance learning model. We made that decision, um, late Friday afternoon. And, um, I think, uh, i- i- knowing, uh, kind of the information and kind of what we anticipated, uh, that was the right move, because, um, over the weekend, we had a couple more people, uh, other individuals connected to the high school and the technical center also test positive. Uh, we did have another meeting this afternoon with the main CDC and the main Department of Education. Right now, uh, we're up to, uh, twelve cases at Sanford High, uh, positive cases at Sanford High School and Sanford Regional Technical Center. You're probably saying, whoa, how did we get to twelve? Well, four of those, um, are, uh, positive cases, um, of people who tested positive before school even started. Uh, if you remember, uh, we did have a delayed start, we also had, um, kind of a, a staggered opening in terms of bringing our students back, and, uh, obviously, those two things helped very much, uh, with that, so, um, those four, uh, tested positive before school even started, so they were, they were, uh, cases that were known to the CDC, but they never stepped foot on, um, on school grounds with that, so. Uh, as we talked with the main CDC today, uh, kind of looking at our situation, um, we're feeling that, um, the individuals picked up, uh, positive in multiple areas, uh, but not, um, it was more of a, probably a community connection where it was picked up, uh, and it wasn't something that was, uh, connected right here at school, um, for that. I wanna give a big, uh, um, shout-out to our, uh, Sanford High School nurse, Lynn Signor. Uh, the admin, administration at the high school, they worked hard last Friday and over the weekend in terms of, uh, close contacts, and being able so that we could get out and be able to identify and contact any of the close contacts. I know, um, I also spent, uh, time yesterday reaching out to the superintendents of our sending schools, uh, to keep that communication lines open with that. Uh, we have another meeting scheduled tomorrow with the main CDC, um, tomorrow afternoon. Uh, I will be sending out another letter tonight after this meeting, uh, for that. I know as, uh, the numbers get up, uh, close contacts is challenging to determine that, uh, with the volume that we have, but we're working hard, and as I said, the delayed start and the staggered opening were some things that really helped us. I just can't stress enough, uh, for everyone that, um, this is something we absolutely need to take seriously. Uh, right now, we have, uh, put us in red, but I also have a faculty and staff not entering the building, they'll also be fully remote as well. That will allow us to continue to clean and focus on those high-touch areas. And one of the things that we're gonna be doing is adding to our website in the, uh, COVID nineteen section and having its own link where people, uh, people can go for updates, uh, to kind of get an idea of, uh, a summary of how many positive cases we have, and then we'll continue to update that, uh, as need be. As I said, hopefully we won't have to, but realistically speaking, in terms of where we are in our community and, uh, the community spread, um, I do expect that that will, um, continue to be, um, challenging. So, uh, open to any questions or concerns that people have regarding, uh, a COVID nineteen update.
Questions, anybody? No, I think you'd, uh, did a good job covering everything, Matt, so. I guess the only thing I'd put out there, maybe for folks, uh, that are watching at home or watch this later, um, essentially, you're planning on the high school remote staying in place until, um, we see some change in the, the outbreak in, in the city, right?
Yeah, it, well, we're also gonna be working with, as I said, the CDC and our, uh, medical, uh, officials in the area. Uh, I think it's a minimum of two weeks is what we're looking at for red, uh, as we hope to be able to look at that. There's also some things tomorrow that we're going to be, uh, talking more about with the CDC around testing. Um, so I'll have some, uh, information, I think, to share with that as well, um, after tomorrow.
Okay, then maybe the only other thing, when we had, we had that email, um, from the citizen about the elementary school still being in person, maybe if you could just touch on some of the, uh, the rationale behind that?
Yeah, as of right now, it's gonna be all the information that we have in front of us in terms of if there's any documented or any positive cases or anything where people have been in terms of if there's any documented or any positive cases or anything where people have been in those, in those schools, in those facilities. And we'll continue to monitor and assess as necessary. But as of right now, with the information that we do have, we don't see that.
Okay, then we're going to get another state assessment this Friday, right?
Yes, that will be another.
That ended up being red, then of course the elementary schools would go full remote because of the community designation.
Correct.
Great. And of course, like you said, the website's being updated with that link directly to all the COVID-19 stuff. So if there's anybody out there that has questions or concerns, maybe reference that and we'll go from there. Yeah, is that it, Matt?
Ask something?
Sure.
I just want to say, well, that was a gut check. So I'm sure it was a gut check for many of us hearing it for the first time. But I just want to tell the community at home that may be watching or watch later that not to get discouraged. We, we can turn this ship around by all doing our part. Like, it sounds horrible now, but let's take this as a teachable moment, turn the ship around, all do our part, mask up, keep our distance and be very diligent so that kids can get back into, into their seats and learn in class. I just, you know, again, my initial reaction, my heart sank, but we, we have the opportunity to turn this around.
Well said, Emily. And if you haven't seen the video that the students put together, watch the video. It's pretty straightforward. Anything else, Matt?
I, I would just reiterate too. I mean, I do believe the vast majority of people in our community are really doing what they need to do. And it's discouraging to have the few that don't believe that they can make a difference, making such an impact on our students. I mean, we've got such a great school system. We've worked so hard. I was thinking all weekend about, you know, I think we're probably about nine years now into, more than that, and planning that high school technical center. I mean, these high school students now have been since they were kindergarten and preschool, looking forward to this. And it doesn't take much for the adults in this community, all of us, to just do what we have to do for the sake of these young people and making sure our schools are something that we can continue to be proud of and offer to our children, so.
Thanks, Kendra.
Yeah, and, and I would just add on, on top of that, as we brought our students back. First, it was so great to see students. I think everyone had a positive energy, was very excited with that. And as, I know as I went around the schools and just my own observations, but also as I talked to others, as our students came back, they did an excellent job in terms of whether it be the, the safety precautions that we have in place, whether it be the face coverings, whether it be the physical distancing, whether it be the hand washing or the symptom, symptom checks. And so I think it just comes back to also point out to us that that's not just a Sanford school thing. Those are things that we want to make sure that we're also pulling and continuing to do both in and outside of school for that. And I think if those are some things that we're going to be able to do, we can get this turned around. If, if we continue to work together and continue to follow what we need to, we can do this.
Excellent. Okay, so I think Steve's chomping at the bit to go. You all set, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, Steve.
Good evening. I have a quick report tonight. Talk a little bit about the Maine Department of Education Corona Relief Funds. It's a day programming grant. The Maine Department of Education and the Maine Department of Health and Human Services invited school districts to apply for Corona Relief Funding to cover unanticipated costs associated with providing childcare in school administrative units that are operating hybrid or remote instruction models. In Sanford, under our current AB schedule, many families have expressed a need for programming for their students the other three days when they are learning remotely. The grant requires that expenses covered must not have been previously planned or budgeted, must address urgent childcare needs caused by COVID-19, must not be reimbursed through any other funding source, and that the expenses covered must incur between September 14th and the end of December. So in looking at this grant, we worked collaboratively with the YMCA to put a program together. The YMCA is a natural partnership for us when it comes to childcare. We've had a longstanding relationship with them. They provide before care and after care for many of our students. And the YMCA in fact provides that care right in our school buildings during the school year. So it was a natural relationship. And so we worked with the Y to put together a program. And so what the Y came up with is called the Distance Learning Academy, and it's designed for students in grades K through eight. It actually began last Tuesday when school began. The program runs a half hour before school begins and a half hour after school ends. Extended hours are available as part of the YMCA normal care that they provide. So during the school day, when students, students are learning remotely, they are broken up into pods by school, and they have staff that are paid for by the Y through the grant to provide education support to these kiddos. Not only do they receive the educational support, but they also receive breakfast and lunch through the Sanford School Department Nutrition. They do follow the safety protocols that we follow in the district. Screening, keeping your mask on, social distancing, the cleaning protocols are still followed. There is a cost associated with the program. It's $25 per day, but there are scholarships away. They have not turned away anybody. And so with the grant, the proposal that we came up with was that YMCA would pay for the staff and the school department would come up with the facility. And so we have been using Lafayette School. So the grant process, it was a pretty, pretty quick turnaround. The grant was due the beginning of September and we got a turnaround within a week. And on Friday, this past Friday, we received notification that we did receive funding for the program. And so our initial award is $116,300. So that's pretty exciting. It has been a life, a lifeline to some of those families who are really in need. I went over there today. They have about 20 kids so far, but they're getting calls every day. If parents at home are interested, they are encouraged to reach out to YMCA. Matt will let it to Y or visit their Facebook page for more information. We're currently in the process of finalizing an MOU with them. We're just waiting some specific details from the department ed before we go ahead and do that. You guys have any questions?
Questions, anybody? Sounds like a great, a great.
I would just like to say thank you, Steve, for that. That, that is such a resource for so many families. So thank you for all your work in making that happen.
But really, I, I'd like to thank Andy and Matt at the Y. They really have worked collaboratively with us. And when they came to us, they said, we have an idea. We worked to make it happen. So it's just a great relationship we have and I'm, I'm hopeful what it will do for our kids moving forward, so.
And Steve, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the Y is also buying computers to help with these, for the kids that don't have anything, correct?
Correct. Some of the, they also receive funding from the city as part of their Corona Relief Funds. So when it comes time, when it comes to buying the computers and the hardware stuff, I believe they're paying for that portion out of the city's grant. For our grant, we're really focused on the staff, the staffing, paying for the staffing, some of the cleaning supplies, and it also is providing us funds to keep Lafayette afloat. Not afloat, but keep Lafayette open and through December 31st. So it's a win-win for, for everybody involved.
Thank you, Steve.
And I would just add that all of our students have one-to-one when it comes to technology. So they do have the ability over there with the technology that we've already given them from the school, as well as the internet access and things that are over there so that they're able to continue on with their academics.
So I, I have a question about internet access. Do we, and Beth, maybe you know more with this, but are all our students, do we have a lot of students who do not have good internet access, even though they have the one-to-one device?
I know Joan had hotspots that she purchased and she was delivering them, I believe, midweek last week to, to families that said they didn't have internet. And I believe that is good for internet for six months, once they turn them on, so.
What about, are the, I know this was, would be a hard one, limits? Cause even when you buy unlimited access on those, they slow down the speed after a while.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering if they have the hotspots and say they're using them on weekends to stream movies and so forth when it comes time to the classroom stuff that week? Are they able to have enough, you know, service to be able to get onto that? Or is it, is it fast enough for Zoom? I mean, that's a question I've wondered about.
It's a question I don't have an answer for.
Well, probably, it's a good question, Kendra. We can, we can reach out to Joan to ask about that. I think at the end of the day, I know last year when we had to do emergency distance learning, internet connection was a challenge for some of our families. And so this year, with what we've been able to do to get out in front of that with the hotspots, right now, that should not be an issue for any family. If they're having any problems or connection, issues with that, we do have, as I said, the, the hotspots that Joan and her staff are working with to be able to get the family set up. Whether or not there's some impacts on that, depending on what they're using it for on the weekends, for example, we'll have to look into that further.
Yeah, it might be a good follow-up item to have the technology department maybe do an update on COVID, issues and how everything's going. Okay, any other questions for Steve? Okay, do you have anything else, Steve, or was that it?
That's it for this evening.
Thanks, Steve. Good work. So we're on to Beth.
My turn. All right, so the Calvert Courseware Learning Update. It was a busy weekend. We, as of, I think you saw in an email earlier, it was about 1:30 Friday afternoon. Everybody was in the program and parents started logging in. I spent the weekend working and troubleshooting any login information they were struggling with. Today was also a very busy day as they started digging into the program. We did find some glitches. Parents had a lot of questions. And I do have to say that even though they might, they might call or email in a moment that they're frustrated or angry, I really felt that by the time I was done with a phone conversation or an email with them, that we were kind of all on the same page that, yep, this is not going smoothly, but we're in it together and we're not just going to abandon you guys. We're here to help you because it's all about the kids and what's best for them. I do have some numbers for you that you were looking for. So as of today, I had Anne run some reports for me. As of today, we have 3,112 students currently in the Sanford School Districts enrolled. Of that, 706 are fully remote learners. Of that 706, 326 are Calvert Courseware learners. So if you look at it in a percentage-wise, we have a total of 23% of our student body that is learning 100% remote in Sanford, pre-K to 12. We have six pre-K that were, that are learning remote as well. And it ends up being about 10.5% are in the Courseware, the Calvert and Courseware learning platform. So as I was sitting there looking at that, those numbers, when I was pulling them today and doing my math, I thought about that, we're, we're, there's three teachers and one of me supporting 10% of our student body and, and learning in a way that we were never trained to do. So I do have to really thank the parents. It has been a journey for all of us, but they have reached out, they've asked questions, they've been very supportive. I have moms that have created a remote learning Facebook page where anybody that's remote learning can go and they've got resources. She added me to it, so if there's any really pressing question, she can tag me in it so I can email it to them. I was able, because of the really good feedback we got from parents as to what was going on, was able to meet with the district manager of Calvert today because I told them we were struggling and I needed help. And he gave me some questions or gave me some answers to our questions, but he also said within 24 hours, he would have the answers to the rest of them. So I started on our Calvert Learning and Courseware page under Family Links. I called it Questions and Glitches. So I basically took what people brought to my attention today and wrote it out what the question or the glitch was. And if I had the answer, I placed it. I put hyperlinks, anything that would help them fix whatever problem they might run into. And if I didn't have the answer, I wrote that down. So I encourage people that are remote learning for Calvert and Courseware to continue to go back to that page, because I will continue to update it as I get more questions and glitches arrive. Any, any questions that you have for me?
Uh, yeah, hey Beth, I have, I don't know if it's so much a question, it's just a thought. As you're talking about, you know, having to do all this troubleshooting, you know, doing stuff over the weekend, you know, with this remote learning, we're really looking at like a 24/7 base of customer now.
Yes.
I don't, do you think we have the support in place for that or is that something we need to look at?
Well, the three teachers I have right now are pretty tech savvy and they're, they're holding their own. We still have a lot more parents that want their students to join. If we get many more at this point, I'm not sure. I, I do know that there might be some, some people out there willing to help as well, but right now, we're doing okay. Soon as we can get everybody up and running, then we can kind of see a better clear picture. But until then, we're, we're doing good.
How are you handling like the, like the off-shift hours, if you will, like people in the evenings doing it? Are some of the teachers working just evenings instead of being in the day? Or you guys doing like 12-hour days?
They're mostly during the day. However, Barb Perry is helping me monitor the email and I will check my email up until 8 o'clock at night. And after that, you really don't want an answer from me because.
You get an answer, but the quality's not guaranteed?
Exactly. Or I won't tell, I won't guarantee that it's a correct answer. And then I'm usually up back up at about 4:30 in the morning and I try to check it then before I come into school. So there's a little bit of downtime where we're not getting back to them, but I try not to, to make them wait more than overnight. If anybody's emailed me during the day, I've gotten back to them within a matter of two or three hours, so. We're, we're doing our best. Parents, parents are working with us and I know they're frustrated and I can appreciate that, but we'll, we'll get through this. When, when you're learning something completely new, it's never smooth and seamless, no matter how hard you try. But I think once everything's up and running and people are able to access what they need to, it'll be really good, really good for the kids. Matt?
Matt?
Yeah, I just want to also add a couple of things. One, as, as this is new, you remember last week's meeting, Beth had told you that sometimes we're at the mercy of the platform itself. And there's something that is, this is, COVID is just not impacting Maine or York County. It's impacting the whole country and the whole world. So they're, they're inundated with those pieces. I also think it's important to remember the structure that Beth has gone over before in terms of what the expectations are for the staff members who are involved with this because it is limited, but you can imagine the setup and the front load and the newness with that is a huge challenge. And then I think the other piece that's going along with it is that with everything that's been going on in our community, we also see, we've had an increase in the number of people have also gone to do this as it's gone on, understandably so with everything that's gone on. So that's kind of, all of those factors together, I think, are challenging. But kudos to Beth and our staff members who are helping with it as they're starting to work through it. And we are getting cooperation from, from Calvert Learning people. And I think with that, we can really start to see now that once we get these kinks worked out, I think we're going to be in a position where it's going to get rolling.
I agree.
That's good. Any other questions for, for Beth?
Yeah, I had one, a just, Beth, I just took a look at the page. It looks awesome, so good job. I love that it's a dedicated page for Calvert learners. Two, again, on the remote side though, I know that, you know, unfortunately, we're only in the high school for a week. But how did that work out last week with, with students remote coming into the classroom? Did it, did it seem to go okay?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear any complaints that Zoom wasn't working or there was anything, any glitches like that. So, no, no, I've been kind of in my office making sure this is getting up and smooth and running. I haven't actually been out into the buildings yet, so. But I haven't heard anything from, from teachers that I know, so I think it's gone pretty well. Thank you.
No news is good news.
Exactly.
Y'all set, Emily? Yeah, okay. Kendra?
And Dawn, I, I just think to follow up with what you were talking about, I, I think it's going to be important, things are changing so quickly, that if we start getting more students enrolled in the. Um, that if we start getting more students enrolled in this, we're gonna have to really make sure we keep an eye on that because we're not gonna be able to. Have Beth and three others handle all that. I mean, we're gonna. Obviously, and I'm sure you know that, Matt, it just really keep an eye on it and make sure we're um keeping up with the resources dedicated to it based on the number of students that jump in, so.
Absolutely.
So it's very impressive what you've done, Beth. I'm glad we have you.
I'm trying.
Would we expect anything less from Beth?
No.
I think it, I think it's good time to add this number in too, since we're getting an idea of numbers, but. We also have, there are seventy-three students. Who were with us last year that were part of our enrollment, that were part of our subsidy. Uh, seventy-three stu- seventy-three students who have transferred from. Uh, to homeschool status, and so that's not, that's not participating in the fully remote options that we offer. That is completely separate as far as a homeschool status. And so I point that out because. Uh, A, I understand that number, especially with everything that we have going on in our community. But at the same time, that's a concern that we're gonna continue to push with the DOE when it comes back in terms of. What the formula is gonna be for the funding um for that going forward.
Thanks, Matt. Um, anything else? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll move on to Cheryl, business manager. What do you got, Cheryl? Anything?
I didn't really have um anything on the major agenda, um, because I was um worried about the audit last week. And how much time I would have, but um, they were actually only here two days and I've actually um have just about all of their. List done, so I'm pretty excited about that. I guess I was more ready than I thought it was. Um, but I thought I would give a little bit of a CARES Act, um, CARES and CRF Fund um update. Um, just so you um understand some of the work that's been going on. Um, we've actually paid out um over almost six hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses um through the CRF Fund. Um, which is pretty substantial when you think about it. It's all going through one person getting paid. Um, and then um we also right now have um. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting there waiting to be paid over the next couple of weeks. Um, half of that is uh just doing the air, the new air filtering systems that were put in by Jim Godbout. Um, but uh I thought I'd just give you that quick update, so we've we've had a lot of work going on. A lot of supplies purchased, I'll tell you.
Any questions for uh Cheryl? Anybody anything to add? Nope. Okay, great. Thanks, Cheryl.
Welcome.
Now we'll move on to new business and we have a couple of uh covid nineteen related items. What do you know?
Sure, so the first one is uh I've been meeting regularly, weekly with our leadership from the Sanford Federation of Teachers. Uh, throughout the summer, throughout July and August. And as we try to navigate all this new situation and uh that we're in. And so one of the things that was a concern that we came back from uh the union was if we look at all the protocols that are in place. Especially in terms of if there's any quarantining that needs to take place. Uh, with that, there was a concern about that in terms of an impact that um that may have. In terms on individual teachers uh that uh in terms of their own sick time uh with that. That's a concern that's not just something that is uh unique to Sanford. It's also unique uh statewide and probably I'm guessing nationwide. I know in our York County meetings as superintendents, we have talked about that. And one of the things that was um suggested to help with that would be setting up a covid nineteen uh sick bank. And so um that's something that we put in front of you tonight that we've been working collaboratively. Collaboratively with with our union. That we're hoping uh a sick leave bank will be established uh for the benefit of the bargaining unit members. Um, going forward from tonight if approved. Uh, and this will be a paid uh leave bank for employees, and it's key to point this out, who are not working remotely. And that's this sick bank will be separate from the existing sick banks. Each eligible employee will be allowed up to ten paid days from this bank for days that they cannot work. Um. Either in person um or remotely due to the coronavirus while Sanford schools are open for in-person learning. And we have identified for the reasons set out below. If any of the employee uh would be eligible if all of the following are true. First off, the employee um has to exhaust all of their paid sick leave that's available to them under the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. Of the FFCRA. Uh, the employee would need to be required to stay home from work due to their own symptoms. This wouldn't be caring for others or because the employee is required to quarantine. Uh, but it wouldn't be for quarantining for related to any travel outside of Maine that was not for an emergency or medical reason. And that the employee is either tested positive, been diagnosed with, or is awaiting a test result or diagnosis for covid. Uh, with that, and so a couple other caveats to that. Uh, the employee would not have to exhaust all of their sick and personally before accessing accessing the bank. In order to withdraw the days, guidance from the district medical staff may be required to describe the evidence of the needed quarantine. Documentation will be um required. And the request will be reviewed by a committee consisting of two met- members of the union, two members of the admin team appointed by the school committee. And then in the case of a tie, the school committee will decide. Uh, and their position shall prevail, and this is only gonna go right now going up to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Uh, and we have that date because in these situations where if people are accessing the sick bank. We would be in uh needing to get substitutes. And those costs of those substitutes are something that would be covered. By our uh coronavirus relief funds or the CARES Act. Uh, so that um doesn't put any exposure onto us in terms of from a financial standpoint. So I think that that is um important to uh to know. So um, I'm open if there's any questions that people have on the covid nineteen sick bank.
Um, okay, I don't really have a question because Matt, more of a comment, I guess. Um, I like the direction of this because I think you want to ensure. That all the employees do not have any incentive to maybe not report if they've been exposed because they don't want to use their sick time. I mean, I think the. Number objective, as we've been talking about going into this right from the beginning, is about safety for everybody. Um, so this just seems like a good step in the right direction. And as you said, I don't think there's a huge exposure cost-wise, because if we end up going red, if there's a big outbreak, we'll go fully remote. So then this bank, I don't think would get hit as hard. I'm like, that's correct, right?
Yes, yep, that's the thinking, that's the thinking behind it, and as you can tell by the wording that we put in there. That, yeah, if we're in a situation where it is fully remote, then that doesn't, that doesn't impact. Because the understanding there would be, well, for the most part, because the understanding there would be that people will be able to continue to work remotely. Uh, even if they had to quarantine, yep.
Okay, Kendra?
So for the uh the money in the sick bank, I mean, if I'm not. I I always understood that the sick bank, the the regular one came from teachers donating to it. Are this okay? Where uh is the money in this particular uh sick bank going to come from?
Right now, yep, there's not, there's not anything there for this particular one that the employees would have to be donating a sick bank. We talked about that. That was something that we looked at. Uh, but I think at the end of the day, based on kind of what Dawn was just talking about, I think the idea would be. This is a good faith gesture from us as the as the school department and the district. With the protections that we need in there so that it's not gonna be abused or taken advantage of. But it's gonna work as it's intended to be able to give people, because you could be in a situation as a teacher. Where you may be asked to quarantine more than once. It it it, that is a a a possibility, and if so, then you only have the first ten days of of FFCRA. After that, it would become out of your sick time, when in fact you're quarantining when you could be negative or when you could also. Uh, be fine, and so that's kind of the that that, those have been the discussions that have been ongoing that we've been working through. To try to get to that, to say, no, I think we can be able to do this without people having to offer up or put a day in.
Okay, anything else? Anybody? Okay, then you know what? I will make the motion to approve a covid nineteen sick bank. For Sanford Federation of Teachers Collective Bargaining Agreement, Article fifteen, as presented.
I'll second it.
Second for Mr. Rue. Any further discussion?
I would, I would just.
Yeah, Kendra?
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, no, I don't.
Okay, then we'll go to the vote. Kendra says yes. Emily, how do you vote?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yep.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well. Okay, so that passed. So uh, Matt, next, you've got compensation schedule?
Sure, so right along with that is obviously as we've been working our ongoing meetings with the union, just concerned that there are some. Uh, additional um covid nineteen related duties. That are being now added to our staff and um their plates. Uh, with that, so we've been working together with them to. Uh, try to uh set that up. Also, this would be something uh as well as. Where we might have challenges. Uh, in situations where substitutes, in situations where we might not have substitutes available. For a particular class or a particular situation, so we wanted to come up. And develop kind of a a uniform system. That would be able to work for that, that would help us at all of our levels, whether it be elementary, middle school or high school. So the first thing we decided was if it was covering a class. Um, if there was something that teachers uh needed to cover another class, we already have that uh set up. In the existing um bargaining unit, and we call that a CHIT. I don't know what that stands for, that's been. Uh, here since I got here and probably long before. But in that situation, uh, it would be um thirty dollars per class. And then for our hourly employees that cover classes. Obviously, that's where the the majority of these do come out and get covered. And so we kind of lined this up. This was something that also was looked at in the collective bargaining agreement when we approved the EdTech agreement. Uh, recently, grades five through twelve, it would be fifteen dollars per class. And grades K through four, it would be fifteen dollars for each thirty minutes. Uh, with that, um, uh, in terms of covering a class. And then there's also the thing that comes back that uh in our, uh, trying to have people. Uh, encourage families, uh, possibly maybe to drop their kids off at school or pick them up. So that we can kind of limit the number of people uh who are on our buses. Uh, to fit within the guidelines. So to do that, there are some times that go beyond the contract, so there are some before and after-school duties. Uh, with that, this would be K through twelve, and what we'd be looking to do is set up some positions per school. And we'd be uh doing our best to give preference to the uh suitable hourly employees. Uh, first, as we're trying to look at our EdTechs, I know. Uh, in many situations, they are looking for some extra hours, so they may not have to work a second job if possible. And so with that, we're looking at. Uh, setting something up where they would basically as an EdTech get their hourly rate. Which would be an overtime rate, which would be time and a half after their normal hours um for doing any of the before or after-school duties. And then if there was uh situations for teachers, that would be thirty dollars per hour uh with that. These are only uh for the Corona Relief Funds that are set to expire. Those are federal funds set to dis- uh expire on December thirtieth. And so that's where this would only be running up to because we do have funds. To cover these uh situations where it would be substitutes or cla- covering classes. Or some of those before and after-school duties to help us. Because it is covid-related in terms of the impact of that it has on busing. And the payments would be made in the last payroll in December, which I think would be helpful for people as that's right before uh the Christmas holiday. So any questions that people have there, but those are some things that we'd like to implement. Uh, to be able to get those covered.
Hey, Kendra?
Uh, I'll just make a motion to approve the covid nineteen compensation schedule for Sanford Federation of Teachers Collective Bargaining Agreement. Article thirteen is presented.
I'll second it.
Oh, I was gonna second it, John. You beat me to it. Um, I was just gonna say before Kendra made the motion, I think it's great that you guys are being proactive and looking at uh trying to head off some potential issues by doing this kind of stuff. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, Kendra, how do you vote? Yes, that's Kendra, Emily?
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote affirmative as well. Okay, so let's uh move onward since uh item J three has been removed. Hopefully, uh, we'll have the custodial contract on a future agenda in the near future. Um, okay, old business, we have none. Uh, resignations, Mr. Nelson?
Sure, we had, um, I'm announcing Tyler Flahin as a phys ed teacher at the high school. Uh, Tyler had an opportunity that came up outside of education that was uh probably too good for him to pass up at this point in his life. So we're happy for him, but sad for us.
Uh, that's too bad, see him go, but we assume the best of luck, as always, so. Uh, staff appointments?
Sure, we're still continuing to uh look at the uh covid custodian thirty-hour positions, so we do have another one to announce here. Appoint Kristen Conway.
Excellent, welcome aboard. Glad to see we're getting some folks in for those uh much-needed covid custodian spots. Uh, staff transfers, I see none. Uh, staff nominations?
Sure, so uh we still continue to be hiring in positions. This uh would be a special education at MCS. This helps us balance out the numbers for coverage. So this would be a resource room teacher for one year, nominating Robin Tucker-Gum. And then also um uh a grade eight math teacher. Uh, pleased to recommend uh and nominate Tyler Coleman as a um grade eight um math teacher.
Excellent, welcome aboard.
Well, I I I, no, I'm catching that. That's a mistake. I just called Tyler Coleman would be a grade eight English Language Arts teacher. So I have to go and check on that. Tyler, I think he'd be happy to know he's not teaching math.
That's good, a big difference there.
Uh, maybe, hey, well, I don't know. I I'm I'm questioning myself now, so I'll leave it there for now uh with that, but. I know I had, I had a nice talk with Tyler as we before I hired him, and so. Uh, either way, I'm pleased to announce there's nobody.
Great. Uh, policies, we have none. Uh, items for future agenda, anything anybody wants to put out there?
I did list uh earlier in the meeting, someone mentioned it may be good to have uh Joan Wright. Come and give a technology update. Joan and her staff have done a phenomenal, phenomenal job here. Uh, all summer and this fall, getting everything set up. Uh, with that, as well as uh two new buildings in essence, when you look at Margaret Chase Smith. And Sanford Middle School and everything that goes with that, so. Uh, I think that would be wise if we could look at um having uh. Um, Joan come and speak at a meeting. And I'd also, in our October meeting, see if we could have our principals also come in at that time to kind of give an update on the opening of school. Uh, for them.
Yes. So let's get anything from anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to calendar announcements. We've got our next regularly scheduled meeting, uh, Monday, October fifth at six P M. Um, location, we'll leave that to be determined at this point. Uh, then Monday, October nineteenth at six P M. Um, and then we have, I was at the building committee and uh school committee are invited to do a couple of walkthroughs next Tuesday, right, Matt?
Yep, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, yep.
Excellent. Um, any other calendar announcements from anybody?
Yeah, we have uh custodian negotiations continued this Wednesday, two o'clock.
Excellent. Kendra?
I I just wanted to, I, if I'm not mistaken, last time we talked about having a workshop for the SRTC programs. I think Jonathan recommended that we do that at some point coming up.
Yeah, we've got that on the radar from uh the last meeting, so.
Yeah, and I did reach out to Kathy Sargent following our last meeting to share some of the feedback that we had. Especially in terms of any timelines or whatnot, so I think it would be good for. I think Kathy can maybe mention that at the October fifth meeting as she reports out on SRTC, and then we can look at having a a that workshop.
Yeah, I figured we kind of wanted stuff to die down a little bit before we tried to get a workshop in, but I'd like to try to have something in by the end of October, so. Um, anything else? Anybody? Okay, then uh we'll move on to adjournment. Do I have a uh? Motion to adjourn, Mr. Rue?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, Kendra beat you out, John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I'll, oh, yeah, I gotta take the roll. Kendra, how do you vote? Yes from Kendra. Emily?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. We are adjourned. Everybody have a great night.
And I probably, I probably should have mentioned this. Sorry about the calendar announcements. But before that school committee on, meeting on the 5th, we are looking at possibly having a couple re-entry hearings for students. They're ready to come back, so I wanted, Liz had a reminder here that it'd see if people would be available probably 4:30 or so on the 5th, leading right into the meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Night, everybody.